So we're gonna, we're gonna go into our 7:00 PM workshop and then at 7:30 we'll start our regular meeting. For our workshop, Mr. Clark, our city planner, will run through with us a local law that the council has asked us to review. And then we'll take any remaining time to talk about parking standards and potential revision to the standards, right?
Yes.
So, take it away, John.
All right. There, I've actually been asked to look at four or five different zoning changes for the code. So, all of them have been briefly discussed. Fishkill Avenue, which I think I talked about last month, has been a topic of discussion at several workshops. And it, I think, the last workshop, it was proposed to scale it back and simplify it a little bit, focus on architectural and landscaping standards and not change the district lines quite as much. So, we took out all the, and this is still in flux, all the resident, currently residentially zoned parcels that would have been in that, and strictly the GB and LI, this, the parcels would be potentially converted to Fishkill Avenue with these upgraded landscaping design, architectural standards. But, the topic for tonight, the one that is actually going to public hearing soon, is sort of miscellaneous corrections. When we redid the zoning code in 2020, sort of did a major rewrite of it, all the tables were changed, remember that? We got most of it right, but there were at least two errors that I found that I am responsible for. And then E-code, in the translation, missed about four or five, six other cross-references and minor things. Yeah, so I've been going through and accumulating these and said that someday we should do a, you know, a correction. So that's what this is. So, there's a couple of things on the tables that, little footnotes, things were wrong, last half of a sentence when a footnote was left out, things like that, in the E-code So, that was lumped, because we were doing changes to the tables in the Fishkill Avenue district. I did them under that, combined them there. So, these are textual ones. I think the biggest one, the strangest one, I think, is to eliminate the parking overlay district, because nobody can figure out why it's there. It's been there ever since I've been there, it's been ever since John here has been there. And if there's no cross-references in the code, it's never been used, as far as I know, for any purpose. And I couldn't find anybody, including the mayor, who knew why it was there. It was instituted in 1992, and somewhere along the line it had meaning, but it doesn't have meaning anymore, so we're just taking it off the zoning map.
If you don't know it, Lee doesn't know, nobody knows.
Well, you should know too, you go back quite a ways.
Not to, oh, burn. Not to 1992.
Right.
Can I give a guess?
Yeah, exactly.
Can I give a guess? I think that there was, you know, the former master plan from many years ago envisioned the parking lots, some of which got built, right? And these districts are in the block behind Main Street. I think the intent was probably if dilapidated houses were abandoned, there wouldn't be a renovation of them, they would go to parking.
Right?
Yeah. That they would, it would allow easier, getting, acquiring parcels easier.
Yes. Well, that's plausible, but it's outdated. We're no longer looking for new parking lots. So, anyway, that's being eliminated and taken off the zoning map. And none of the other ones are substantial, except that there's one change that I added, well, some are just consistency, you know, footnotes that are wrong, or citations, the district no longer exists. One change I did, and this was as a result of Citizens Bank project, remember that he wanted to extend the part, the building, the three-story building over to, close to where the mosque was, and wanted to do a one-story addition there?
Yeah.
Because he didn't want to have, you know, block off the arid white to the mosque parcel. And when we did the zoning, we forgot to point out that, you know, we wanted to keep two-story minimum all on the facades, but not necessarily on the entire building. So, this would have prevented, prohibited, you know, an accessory maintenance building in the back that was one-story, or a rear addition that was one-story, like a kitchen off of restaurant, or whatever. So, this corrects that. It says one-story accessory buildings to the rear of the principal building are permitted, and one-story sections set back at least 50 feet from the principal building facade are permitted. So, that would take care of the, you know, the Citizens Bank.
Curious on that one. The, at least the way it reads, one-story accessory buildings to the rear, that means it could be a separate.
Yes.
Entity. Then, one-story secondary sections set back at least 50 feet, does that also mean that those sections should be separate, could be separate?
No, I'm envisioning that as being attached to the building, but lower in height.
Yeah.
Beyond 50 feet from the front plate of the building.
Just to make it abundantly clear, is there, is there a way to maybe alter the language?
Yeah. John here had the same issue. But I couldn't, I mean, that was as clear as I could figure out how to make it, and I'll, I'll take another attempt if anybody has any wording suggestions.
I forget the architect would, but.
Well, I was gonna say some attached actually works.
Yeah.
I was gonna say something, a little more lengthy, portions contiguous, something to that effect. I think attached, attached sections or something, yeah.
Attached sections, okay.
Yeah, I'll keep it simple. Was it annexed?
No, not annexed.
Some of the design illustrations were also left out in the E-code version. So, we're putting them back in.
Dimensional regs?
What's that?
Sorry, I missed what you, there was some distraction over here.
Yeah. So, there were some design illustrations that were originally part of the CMS district that were left out, for some reason, in the E-code version, so we're putting them back in. We decided it was better to just make an amendment to the code, rather than trying to go back with history and say, well, you forgot, you misinterpreted this, or you forgot to put this in, or whatever.
Yeah.
Because some of them, a couple of them were my fault, and a couple more of them were E-code's fault.
That's big of you to accept blame.
Well, you know, if you remember, there was a lot of changes, a lot of versions of that code, so it was hard to keep everything straight.
Yeah. You sure you caught them all?
Uh, probably, yes. If I didn't catch them, nobody else has.
Yeah. Besides the slight modification to the 1234th one, yeah, any other questions or comments? I think then what we'll do is send our, I don't know what you call it, approval, acceptance?
Yeah. Recommendation. Recommendation to the council.
Yeah, that these are.
You know, I just noticed one thing I had a question about, and it wasn't clear to me. The protective creekside buffer, is that a reference that just references correctly?
Yeah.
It's not a change, right?
No, it's not a change, it's just references the wrong paragraph. Okay. So, the other thing, since we have some time, that I thought I'd bring up, so the other three amendments, there's the Fishkill Avenue, which is a sort of a work in progress, been through at least five workshops, and I'm not sure we're going to a public hearing soon, but maybe. And then, they asked me to look at sections of the code that have minimum sizes for apartments. They want to encourage smaller apartments, so you have less expensive apartments. And were there any, the question was, were there any sections of the code that have minimum size requirements that could be eliminated? And I found two or three. One which I suggested we keep, which is the minimum size for apartments that are in the inclusionary housing section, because they're mixed in with market rate. And I thought that they, you know, they're already relatively small as a minimum, and I didn't want to, you know, have shoebox, low-market-rate units, and then large luxuries other market rate in the same building. I thought that that was unfair. So, we kept those, at least at this point, in the draft. And then, the only other two sections of the code that would be revised to eliminate them are the artist's live workspace, has some limited limitations on the size of a artist's live workspace. We said, you know, if you're a jewelry maker, or some other artist who doesn't need a lot of space for your workshop, or whatever, why not? Why require a minimum? So that somebody could do smaller spaces if they wanted to.
So, it's just removing the minimum altogether?
Yes. You know, I make some other changes, there's three or four or five references, the different size requirements, the size of a kitchen was in there, the size of a, you know.
I know it's not practical, but what if, what if some knucklehead came with a 200-square-foot apartment?
It's, I think there are requirements within this New York State code.
Yeah, there's got to be.
I actually asked, I asked Bruce about that, and he gave me the requirements in the code, and there are minimums, but they're pretty small.
Yeah, the state, yeah, state building code has required minimum sizes for, you know, for different things, but, you know, I think what John was looking together was the efficiency apartments, you know, trying to, what's the smallest case that could actually take place? And off the top of my head, I think it was 220 square feet, but, yeah. But that doesn't include, if it doesn't include, you know, a closet for storage, it doesn't include the bathroom, you know, that type of thing.
So, 250, 250.
So, now the apartment's gonna start to grow to make it a little bigger at that point.
Yeah, there's required elements.
Yeah, just for the, you know, like the common area space where somebody's gonna use as their living room, bedroom, that has to be that minimum size, and then, you know, you start adding out for a kitchen area and a.
I got you.
Bathroom as well, and then a closet for storage.
So, comfortable with that, it's the IVC?
Yes.
IVC, that, that covers it? Yeah.
And, you know, just because there isn't a minimum in the code, doesn't mean the planning board doesn't have some discretion here, that if somebody came with, with, you know, an 80-square-foot apartment, or something outrageous, the planning board could say no.
They'd hear from Bruce first.
But do we want to say in the code, the minimum is to meet the IVC?
I don't think we have to.
Yeah, any self-respecting person should.
Somebody's gonna come with a 10 by 10 room, and there's no minimum.
The code is complicated, you know, it's, it's a couple paragraphs long of different things. So, I would just eliminate the minimums, just like we're proposing the minimum parking standards, to think about the minimum, eliminating minimums, and allowing the planning board discretion in terms of the size of necessary parking, based on the context of the parcels. That's, the second one, first one was artist's live workspace, the second was in, there's a senior affordable housing overlay zone, which has only been used once, because it was tailor-made for the old hospital. And so, no other parcel would qualify for it in the city, even though it's called an overlay zone. So, it's a floating zone that has one parcel that can qualify. So, that didn't make any sense to me, so I suggested that we overhaul the senior over, affordable housing overlay, to allow lots of parcels to qualify. So, you know, somebody who had a larger parcel, wanted to put in some senior housing, could come to the city council and make a proposal, and if the council thought that it was worthy, and it didn't have major conflicts in the neighborhood, or whatever, they could change the zoning, put an overlay district there, and allow senior housing to be built. You know, that had a lot of questions from the council. But it did have these minimum housing standards, and for seniors in particular, you can get by with really small stuff, because a lot of times they have, you know, common kitchens, cafeteria-type things, you could, you could essentially have assisted living, and, yeah, where you really only need the size of a bedroom and a bathroom. So, we took those out, and I made other changes, suggested changes in the draft, that would allow the senior housing, affordable housing overlay zone to be used on multiple parcels if you qualified, and you could convince the council that it's a worthy project.
Yeah, is it applicable to any parcel?
Well, no, there's still some minimums.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But it's much more flexible, it's, the building doesn't have to be existing and over 50 years old, which is what the other one said.
Yeah, that's pretty specific.
Yes. And the density was four units per acre, which is like a suburban standard, because the old hospital had this huge parcel. So, anyway, I took out a lot of the sort of restricting things, so that it would be the council, we had some, at the workshop where it was going to be discussed, we had some computer issues with the Zoom network, wasn't, the audio wasn't working really well. So, we ended up not discussing it, so I haven't had any feedback from the council, but I thought you should be aware that we're at least talking about these things.
Yeah, nothing we need to share back to the council?
No, there's no, they haven't even, they've seen the draft, but they haven't had a chance to even comment on it. And then the last.
I was gonna say, real quick on this, on this topic, do you think there's any appetite for increasing the minimum percentage of affordable units to more than 10%?
Uh, there is some interest on the council in that. I've recommended against it, because I think the net benefit will out, will, will be lost, and you'll actually have fewer below-market-rate units happen at 20% or 15% than you will at 10%, because it'll just drive people away from the market.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We've already seen, I've done an analysis of the number of housing units were, were proposed in the five years before the affordable housing section, the inclusionary zoning was included, compared to the five years after. And it's like 50, down 50%. Now, that could be attributed to other things, you know, maybe the market's saturated, maybe Edgewater tilted, you know, but, there has been a real shift, and commercial development has gone up by like 80-some percent. I can't remember the exact numbers, but it was dramatic, that the number of housing has increased since that was adopted, and the number of commercial components has, has increased by dramatic. And so, it's already affecting the market, people are coming in with fewer.
Or it may be. It might be affecting, I mean, there's a, you don't know if there's causation, there's a correlation, but.
Exactly. But there's, there's other cities where documentation has been made. Portland, Maine increased it from 10% to 20, 25% or something like that, and like 90% of the housing units went down by 90% the next year.
Wow.
So, you end up with, yeah, all this looks good on paper, but it creates fewer units in the long run.
That makes sense.
So.
My, my own observation, when I've seen, like, the actual rental rates on the designated affordable units in the newer developments, they're definitely lower than the market rates on the other units, but, to be frank, I really wouldn't call them affordable, I mean.
Well, they're designated as workforce housing, which is a higher, usually a higher percentage than affordable. They were designed for city workers and employed people who don't have higher-paying jobs. That was the intent. But it is 70% of median income is the qualifying number, so, that's still relatively low, but because the rents are so high, generally speaking, in Dutchess County, it's still not cheap, not by Beacon, you know, 1980 standards.
Yeah, well. 70% of.
Just 20, 10.
Dutchess County median, annual median. Yeah. And Dutchess County has a relatively high median income.
What is it, in the 40s?
I have a question. Are there tax incentives for building affordable housing?
Uh, well, through the state, yes.
Okay, so.
Not through the.
So, they're, they're getting market rate in the end?
Hmm, I know.
Well, they get market rate, because they can make, you know, somebody who has a plot of land can make the most money on market rate housing. So, we're requiring 10% to be below market rate, and they have to subsidize that out of their other units.
I'm just trying to understand, what's the incentive to make affordable housing?
Well, in this case, it's mandatory. If you have, if you're building over 10 units, by code, you have to produce 10% of workforce housing.
The incentive is penalties.
Tax-wise?
Well, there are tax subsidies and tax incentives, but they're through the state, not through the state, generally speaking.
There's a provision of New York State law, the private housing finance law, which is a very, provides a very elaborate, basically, tax, tax credit system, but that's for either conversion or brand-new construction, and that's typically 100% affordable. Tompkins Terrace recently is transitioning to, you know, PHFL financing, so, it's there, but you have to have really a, a market, you know, someone in the market that this is what they do. They, they literally build affordable, or a large portfolio of their, of their construction management operation is affordable, and the benefits of that is a, you know, is a tax credit system.
So, West End Lofts, the front two buildings were that, are 100% affordable, and then the back building is market rate.
Right.
Which helped pay for the mix. And they got dramatic state subsidies to make that happen.
Right.
So, either you get subsidized by the state, or you can get 10% developer financing.
Right. Well, and the other, the other benefit of a, of a private housing finance law transaction is, there is a, there's an underlying tax, real property tax exemption, but it's usually coupled with a pilot agreement. But that provides a, a real property tax break to the owner as well. But again, these are, these are entities that, there are some local, I mean, Ken Carney comes to mind, I mean, there are, there are local participants that really focus on that market segment, and there's some national ones as well, but, you know, your typical builder who's coming to Beacon is not going to look for that kind of an avenue.
The other thing I wanted to mention was, the council has asked me to prepare a draft that would eliminate minimum parking standards. So, I've done that. Again, they've, they, because of the audio issue at the last workshop, we couldn't actually discuss it, but it is on the table, you can probably read a draft at the last council meeting, council workshop. I don't know.
So, the, the net effect of eliminating it is basically just crossing it out?
No, no, that's something else.
This is something.
That's the parking overlay district.
Parking overlay, okay.
This is, this is the section 22326, our off-street parking section. I've gone through it and sort of taken out all the requirements for minimum parking, which is sort of the purpose of it, up until this point. So, we have a list of minimum parking standards for every type of use, and we have exemptions for minimum parking requirements, and shared parking, and land banking, all these other sorts of things. We have the 1964 exemptions from minimum parking standards.
This makes John happy.
Yes. So, what I've done is, is I've gone through and eliminated all the requirements, so the word required is taken out about 100 times. I took out the 1964 parking exemptions, it seems like we've finally gotten to the point where we should retire that one. 64 is a long time to look back. And the table has gone from a minimum to a maximum table. So, it gives guidance to the planning board that this is too much. What used to be a minimum is a maximum now. Now, it doesn't allow you, it's only a recommendation, it's a standard, you can go beyond if the parking study shows that you need more parking, but it's a guidance for you and the developers that we're trying to cut back on excessive parking. And the key paragraph in here is this one, which says, "In order to promote walkability and other transportation alternatives, and to avoid excessive automobile traffic and unnecessarily large paved parking lots, no minimum parking number of off-street parking spaces are required, except for a minimum of one off-street parking space for each one or two family dwelling," because they don't come to you. So, they would have a minimum of one.
Yep.
And everything else would be determined during site plan. So, that said, "The planning board shall determine the appropriate number of on-street, on-site parking spaces as part of site plan approval, and based on the context of the property, including but not limited to the size of the parcel, the proposed use, existing buildings on the parcel, especially if they are designated as historic, availability of public and street parking in the area, walkable access to public transit, a professional parking study with demand reduction strategies prepared by the applicant, and input from any public hearing." So, the following table indicates the maximum parking that should be allowed, but the planning board may require substantially fewer spaces.
So, just sort of thinking through a scenario or two.
Yes.
An applicant comes to us and says, based on this, I don't think I require any parking.
Right.
Or comes to us and says, how much parking do you think we need, Park Planning Board?
152, 158 Fishkill Avenue. We were going round and round with them on the parking. So, this is.
So, this is the same, same thing would work, except that you wouldn't have a minimum to try to work with.
Yeah.
You would have a maximum you would work with. So, they would come in, and they would do a parking study on a project that requires site plan. In it, it's required to have demand reduction strategies. So, how do you deal with walkability issues, transit issues, bicycle racks instead of parking spaces, those sorts of demand reduction types of issues? It's still, in the code allows you to landbank.
Yep.
So, that if you think that it's questionable how much you need, you could always require them to landbank spaces. Up to 50% of the spaces can be landbanked.
So, there is a mechanism, though, then, for the applicant to be required to come to us with some analysis, and to say to us, listen, based on X, Y, and Z of the code.
Right.
And other aspects of our application. It's our determination that X number of spaces are adequate.
Yeah.
So, there's a starting point, instead of them just coming to us and saying.
Oh, yes.
How many, how many, planning?
Any large project would be expected to do a parking analysis, and come to you with a, you know, an analysis of how much they think they need, based on parking availability and whatever the numbers show. But the way it works now is, the planning board is always going through contortions to try to come up with a, something that satisfies the code number. So, they're looking for the exemption or the waiver requirements, or sending the planning, the applicant to the zoning board to get a variance. This would eliminate a lot of that stuff, and the planning board would work it out with the applicant, what they think is appropriate.
The, I know we can't have our cake and eat it too, but, and I obviously see the consideration where, on a recurring basis, the boards, you know, okay, well, this is the parking that's required, and whatever, we're gonna prove something else. I am a little concerned that either if we're not starting out with a hard and fast requirement, or if, you know, okay, so you gotta come in with some study, I've been, I've been hiring expert witnesses for the past 20 years, and if you pay people $400 or $500 an hour, they normally say what you want them to.
Under oath?
Um, usually they ask for a little more, or if you're making them testify under oath. Um, well, I'm, I think the concern is, is pretty much stated just by that. I am a little concerned, this is just gonna become a game of who has the nicest PowerPoint presentation.
But you always have your independent transit, the transportation consultant who can give you a hard and fast analysis. It's not, you know, there'll, there'll be mechanisms and precedents based on other parcels. And you can make exceptions that way for, say, a historic building that you don't want to put a parking lot next to, and it's near a public parking lot. You don't have to go through a variance process, or a, there's multiple cities, over 200 in the, in the country, that have eliminated minimum parking standards, and they're doing relatively well through the system. The latest one was to Kingston, was, Kingston, New York, was eliminated all minimums, and instituted maximums instead. And they require a demand reduction strategy from each applicant, and.
Similar to what we're proposing here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I have a question? I just, I happened to look at the Cold Spring Code, and they have a parking, a very simple set of parking regulations. There's parking minimum, and there's parking maximum, right, for the various uses, and then there's a, what they call like an efficiency, a shared-use efficiency matrix, that whether you're commercial and residential, there's a different multiplier that's used. It's incredibly simple, you don't have to hire a consultant, and it's, and it's very clear and predictable for an applicant what the requirements are. And you don't have the problem of consultants, better consultants, you know, a battle of.
Yeah, but numbers game always puts you in a box, that you don't, it takes away the planning board's flexibility for a project that really. for a project that really you don't think needs any parking, because it's in a range. We have that in Village of Rhinebeck, too. There's a minimum, maximum range, and it always puts you in a bind if you really don't think it needs the minimum, but you're stuck with it unless they go get a variance.
But don't the efficiency ratios that are standardized? There's recommendations from traffic studies.
Standardizes the problem. People make up these numbers with very little information. If you go to the ITE standards on parking, they're incredibly ridiculous in their parkings. They base the national standards, and almost everybody goes by, on four or five studies done in suburban locations, not in urban locations. And they way overestimate the number of parking spaces that are necessary. And that's what all the engineers use.
Don't the consultants use that, too? Similar studies? They're based upon actual case studies?
But they're not case studies in the city of Beacon.
No, no, but yes. And I agree, I agree with the intent. I feel a little uncomfortable. I think a lot of people would, from their own experience, don't feel like they have parking available whenever they want, right? That's not the perception that most people would tell you if you talk to people in Beacon that are driving in and doing things here. And so I would feel more comfortable if there was, if we didn't just do this, if there was a study or some sort of analysis of parking demand and parking supply, and also how these, how this would work out under the current code and under the proposed code in selected example parcels, commercial, residential, right? So that we could understand a little better what that impact is and how it affects the city. Because there's a number of different contexts and locations. There's different, like Fishkill Avenue is different than downtown, it's different than...
That's why it's hard to put a one, one number on each retail use, because Fishkill Avenue will be different. There's no on-street parking out there. There's plenty of on-street parking in the city center. So it's really hard to do these sorts of...
Yeah, the problem is a hard and fast approach, even though it has the advantage of ease of application, is actually kind of an ad hoc thing. But a non-hard and fast approach is always an ad hoc thing.
Nah, that's what I'm trying to get to. And to some degree, it's prescriptive by zone, you know, and by design, with discretion by the planning board, which, better than what we have now. I'm just curious, and we're moving past time. How is the city council trending on this?
Well, I don't know.
Oh, you, so yeah, that's right, you didn't get a chance.
Yeah, we've had some, they haven't seen the draft code yet, or they haven't been able to comment on their draft code yet. They did have a couple of discussions, and there was at least two or three or four who were in favor of eliminating the minimums.
Yeah.
But putting in place some sort of standards or guidance for the planning board, which is what I did through the maximum.
So safe to say it's a little early for them to hear from us?
Yes.
May come back?
I was just giving you a heads up, just sort of thinking about that.
And so it may be valid to...
And I'm sure there's plenty of people who think that there's not enough parking, and that we should raise the parking standards rather than eliminate them.
I ordered a book, so I'm going to try and educate myself. Because like I said, I'm skeptical. It doesn't seem, it breaks from standard practice, and I'd love to see what other similar talents have.
Is the book by Donald Shoup?
Yeah, I was going to say, is it the High Cost of Free Parking?
No, 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 no. I used to listen to a podcast from that guy. It's another, there's another...
So we got a... I know at 7:35, just one really quick thing. Just relate, on the parking thing, one idea I heard about from a friend of mine who works in the planning department in a different locale in New York is the possibility of going the exact opposite way of what you're talking about, frankly, in lieu of parking fees, meaning you have a parking requirement, and you are either providing the parking, or you're paying per parking spot fees. It goes into a pot run by the city, the city provides parking.
We used to do that.
There's still a provision in the code about it, but generally speaking, doesn't ever produce enough parking that, and it just drives up the cost of housing, because they have to pay $10,000 a space. And the city never gets enough money to actually create a space of parking. So those things generally, unless you really soak them, you know, like $20,000, $30,000 of space, you never can create enough parking, or you can't create parking using the amount of money that you get, generally speaking.
And in and of itself, somewhat of a disincentive to development? If you're trying to soak...
Yes. And if parking is, by studies, 17% the cost of housing is in the parking. So if you can eliminate parking, you bring down the cost of housing. If you, if you charge them $10,000 a space, or whatever the in lieu fee is, you're losing that advantage.
Yeah, look, if you've got a parking requirement, either the developer is going to devote more space to parking and less space to the building, meaning whoever you want to say is subsidizing it, everyone subsidizing it, one person is whatever. Or on the in lieu of fee thing, they're either going to provide the parking, or they're going to pay the fee, or under the ad hoc thing, they're going to pay the consultants to try to get them the best result they can. But no matter how you cut it, if there is a parking requirement, this is a cost of doing the project, and you would be accurate, if you want to put it that way, to say this is driving up the cost of housing, but having to comply with the fire code is driving up the cost of housing. You know?
Yeah. Okay, I think we'll leave it there.
Okay.
Safe to say, more to come. So, well, excuse me, welcome everybody to the October 2023 meeting of the City of the Beacon Planning Board. First item to discuss is entering our September meeting minutes into the record. Are there any, is there any feedback on ads, changes? We're good?
Thank you very much.
Whose name? His? L E S T E R. So I'll accept a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
And I just have to note that it's a rare occasion, we're actually all together. So thanks, everybody, for being here for probably the shortest agenda I've ever seen. Yeah, so the first, and it sounded kind of suspicious. They've only started getting shorter since Mercedes started, so what are you doing? She's just taking the applications. We can find a big pile of applications. The first and only item on our regular meeting agenda has to do with a continued review of an application for site plan approval and special use permit, personal wireless service facility at 375 Washington Avenue, submitted by Verizon Wireless at the East LP. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Scott Olson. I'm here from Young Summer. And yes, I appreciate the short agenda. I think at one point, within the last year, I may have addressed the board as good morning, because it was about 12:15 in the morning next day. Anyway, we were last here back in May, and since that time, I think two significant things have occurred, one of which is we did perform the balloon test and complete the visual analysis. So that should be within your possession. We looked at about 37 different locations, and only four of them, you could actually see the balloon. And it was only partially visible, we did simulations. So we feel pretty happy with that. It's usually you have more visibility. For whatever reason, topography, vegetation, seems to be screening this fairly well. The second significant thing was that your RF engineer did provide a report, and I think a supplemental report also. He went back and forth with our engineer. He confirmed that we do have a need for this site in this general location, and he confirmed that the height that we're proposing is the minimum height required. So with that, if you have any questions, we have Verizon's RF engineer here. If you want to ask him any questions.
Yeah, well, so thank you. I think we'll hear from our city consultants first, and I'm just curious, is our engineer on the line? Are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, hey, great, thanks for joining. So we'll start with you. If you wanted to just kind of share with the board some of your high-level observations and any questions you might have still yet for the applicant.
Okay, well, good evening. My name is William Johnson, and I am the RF consultant for the city planning board. Freely standard review, 120-foot proposed tower, and the question always is, does it have to be at that location? And secondly, once we've crossed that threshold, does it have to be as tall as the applicant is proposing? So we address those in two separate reports. The first was dealing with the situation prior to the decommissioning of one of Verizon Wireless's sites, that was the Mount Beacon site. When we first issued our preliminary report, which had a lot of technical background information in it, and analysis of the then-existing conditions, when the Beacon, Mount Beacon site was decommissioned, that changed the entire radio frequency landscape. So we've been working on that since the end of August through September, and we were able to get some current information from Verizon Wireless about the existing coverage, and more importantly, for tonight's meeting, the necessary height of the tower. So those are covered in the, what's called a supplementary report. It lacks all of the technical information. It was in the first report, assuming that that has been reviewed by folks that need to know that information. And the basic summary is the site is needed, because there is a current site with Mount Beacon decommissioned called Groveville, which is to the north of the proposed site. And that's pretty much the one that's handling the traffic from the area where the tower is being proposed. With the addition of the new tower, if it's approved, that will draw traffic from the Groveville site, which is starting to reach and has at times peaked over the top of maximum forward data volume. That's the amount of data that's being transmitted between the tower and the cell phone. That has been exceeded in a number of instances since Mount Beacon has been decommissioned. And the other problem is that the higher-frequency signals, it's called the mid-band signals, don't propagate as far. So Grove Land is not able to provide mid-band coverage to the target coverage area. So a new site in that area of the proposed site on Washington Avenue is required to provide mid-band coverage. The important part about that is mid-band frequencies are where about 90% or more of the bandwidth capacity that Verizon Wireless intends to provide to its subscribers, mid-band is where that's provided. The only way to get mid-band coverage is to have a site that's in the vicinity of the proposed project. The low band, which is the 700 megahertz and 850 megahertz band, that propagates further, and fortunately has been providing service to the city. But that bandwidth is only about between 7% and 10% of the available bandwidth. And that's just not enough to service the number of subscribers, as every home is getting two or three cell phones, cars are starting to talk to the towers, and your appliances and houses are starting to talk to the towers. So whether that's a good or a bad thing, it pushes up the data volume. So from a high-level point of view, there is a need. We looked at three different heights, actually 20 feet over the top of what's being proposed, just to get a framework. And the reduction to 116 feet antenna centerline, which is what's proposed, provides pretty much the bare minimum coverage. If you drop below that, there are areas which are provided in the, I believe it's the October 2nd materials provided by the applicant, that show that the important areas that they really intend to cover are being blocked by the foliage in the vicinity of the proposed site. And if we drop to 96 feet, which would allow a shorter tower, we don't get the coverage in the areas that the applicant has targeted as important areas. So I hope that provides a high-level perspective, and that's, all the details are in the report, but I can certainly answer questions if you have any.
Yeah, I just have a quick question right off the bat, just looking at the submission and the series of photographs. And this is more to the applicant, because I really couldn't put this together when looking at it earlier. The balloon, and then the facsimile of the tower itself in place of the balloon, in these photographs, is in a single location, and these photographs are from different vantage points?
Correct. 37 in total.
Right. You know, no, I get, okay, so yeah, I get that. And then, and then, so I just wanted to confirm. But then the height of the tower, I heard mentioned that there were two different heights, 20 feet over, and then the actual height. So what height is this balloon at?
We're proposing 120 feet. The, I think Mr. Johnson was looking at 140 feet, just to get perspective to... Because actually, we've been in municipalities where they've said, you might want to go a little higher, even though we've come in at a certain height. But that's not the case here, but he wanted to see 20 feet above what we're proposing, and 20 feet below, and see what works.
I see. So what height is the, because I can't, again, I can't tell. In the photos where the balloon is visible, what height is that balloon at?
120 feet.
That's at 120, which is the proposed height.
Correct.
Was there a height quoted with or without the lightning rod, and what were those again?
So then there's a four-foot lightning rod, so the tower would be 100. The tower, plus the lightning rod, is 124 feet. In practice, you don't really see the lightning rod, because it's, you know, you know, the top of your tower might be two to three feet wide, and then you have like a pencil stick, lightning rod, whatever it is. You really don't see it.
You know, the photos that concern me, if people haven't had a chance to go through them all, there were two photos, one from the Kemprin driveway, and I think one from Matteawan Road, where the tower would be visible. And I think, you know, it's not above the ridge line, but it's rising up from a hill, you know, that is, with the ridge line in the background. And that's kind of a view shed that's got a lot of significance for the city. And I was just thinking, you know, is that something where, you know, more could be done with a stealth kind of design or something, you know, to maybe, and that, you know, obviously, I'm not driving to the Kemprin driveway to go get a scenic view, but there may be other vantage points along that Route 52 corridor, I don't know. You know, like maybe from the people who are at Industrial Arts out on the terrace, or maybe other, you know, other locations. And I was a little bit, I just had a little bit concerned about, okay, so this is going to be something that's going to be on that, you know, view shed now.
Yeah, I looked at that area in particular, because the city has a scenic view shed section in its code, but it's never actually designated. And they hadn't, there were a bunch proposed, and they never got adopted. So the only designated views in the city are down near the waterfront, for the most part. But one of the areas, when I drove all over the city looking for spectacular views, was from State Street and Fishkill Avenue, which is close to the Kemprin driveway. And that is, because there's no foreground vegetation, and you look over that, those industrial buildings that were workers' housing, you get a spectacular view of the ridge line for about, you know, an eighth of a mile or something. And the closest representation to that is up that Kemprin driveway. But the Kemprin driveway, that visible location that you found a view of the tower, is about 20 feet higher than Route 52. So my guess is, and I asked the question so that you can take a second look at it, on the color charts, it doesn't show up. It shows that the terrain will block that, or the vegetation will block that on top of the terrain. And my guess is it'll, because it's just above the secondary ridge line from Kemprin, that's 20 feet higher. So when you come down to State Street, my guess is it'll be behind that ridge line. And the only question is whether it will be visible in the winter versus the summer, because it'll be behind the tree line, but not necessarily behind the leaves.
Yeah, I can ask our people to look at that. But again, at some point, these things aren't going to be visible. The fact that we have only, you know, a few locations that are visible. Because if it's not visible, eventually the site doesn't work. So, but I'll ask our engineer to confirm that, because I think you're correct. I think the lower elevation will effectively screen it.
You mean, you mean standing at 52, right, on 52, right, at that elevation?
Right, if you're down on 52 itself.
Right.
You're in lower elevation than where they took the shot on Kemprin Drive.
That makes sense.
And if you look at the yellow and whatever green maps there were, that partial State Street says it's blocked by the vegetation because of the elevation, I think. But I just thought that that's the one place which is a very important public view. And eventually, well, I think will be designated a scenic view by the city. I wanted to just make sure what the look in that direction was like. I wanted to just make sure what the look in that direction was like.
Out of 37 photographs, locations studied, there are four where this is visible. That's one of them. There's five?
Four, five, did I count wrong?
Three, six, 25, 27, 36.
Bingo.
I apologize. I thought it was four.
I have a question about the, the views that, where it's not visible, but seems to be primarily due to vegetation. Do we have a sense of in the winter, how much, like what the analysis is on the impact?
It depends on the vegetation. You know, if it's a fairly wooded area, our experience is the drop of leaves is not that significant because you'll have a tower sticking up among other trees. So even though you don't have the leaves to block it, it, because it's a galvanized gray, tends to blend in and it's not very visible. Plus you have a whole bunch of trees that are up. But if it's only, the vegetation is sparse, it might be a little different story.
Yeah, the fact that it's in woods and it's multiple trees you'd be looking through.
Does it, how's it done, screening effect?
But I asked that question for them to answer the same thing is, will there be a substantial difference between the winter and summer views?
So that's part of your review?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I had, I had one question going in somewhat different direction. I went up and took a look at the site and the one question I really had is just, so the location of this is right next to that boundary between the cemetery and the Chevron property.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a fence and there's two like parallel roads or trails going along both sides of that fence. On the Chevron property, about 200 yards away, plus or minus from the proposed location, there's a platform that's there from something prior. I don't know if it was a radio antenna or why. And it's a little bit higher up and it's got like a more or less maintained road going Why not that location instead?
I will ask Nate.
It's just going up there and looking around. It kind of, like, it's an apparent question.
So there's, okay, you're not talking about the water tank?
No.
Okay.
All right, if you look at Google Maps, the water tank is going to be located north and a little bit west from where we're talking about. I'm talking about just about directly 200 east. And if you're looking at a topographic map, this is going to basically be the top of that little hill. And the location is kind of on that ridge as it goes down a way.
Closer to the property line if you're going east?
Right.
Okay. I don't know.
It's, it maybe.
Okay. I mean, is the, I mean, I think there are houses further to the east, so I don't know if we're keeping it a little further away. Even if it's a, like, if we're going higher, while the tower could possibly be not as tall, it's still going to be the same elevation in terms of, it still has to get over the trees. So you might be lowering the tower a little bit, but it's still going to be at that same elevation above ground. So I don't know if that's.
Yeah, one of the most visible areas is in the town to east. So moving, they actually increased their.
Glenamie?
Yeah, the, a lot of other things I can say from just having gone out there, other issues aside, this is a location where, you know, this is way up above the cemetery. There's not really anything else going on up there. This isn't a place traffic's really going through or likely to be going through.
David, can you point it out on this map for them?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got, he's got the map right there.
I, I'm sorry, the residential area is actually north.
You're right there and right there, you guys are going to walk up to that square. There's the road and there's a concrete base.
Yeah, we wouldn't use that concrete base. That's, we couldn't use that for our purposes.
Is it in the town or is it right on the line almost?
Yeah, this is the line between these locations. Right.
We should try to have these discussions.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's pull it back to the microphones.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know, all I know is we still don't have.
We still don't have coverage on the train. Which is, that's just.
Okay.
I don't get cell coverage.
So, okay.
That's it. Because the only real, the only question I have.
We'll, we'll find out. Take a look at it.
Okay. For the record, we positively identified what Member Jensen was referring to and you'll clear and you'll take a look.
Correct. A location east of the currently proposed location, close to the town, city boundary line.
Yeah, okay. So John, let's talk about any other observations you might want to highlight for us.
Okay, we talked about the leaf issue and the Fish Gill Avenue sightlines. The, one question I had, and I'm not sure if you'd answered this before, but you're decommissioning the tower up on Mount Beacon, does that mean we lose one of those towers up there?
It's been decommissioned.
But I mean, is, is a tower coming down?
I don't know because it's not our tower. I believe SBA is the owner of the tower. Although driving in, I didn't see antennas up there, but I, that was pretty far away. So I don't know if there are still antennas up there. So I can't speak to that, but if.
It's not your tower?
It's not our tower. It's a SBA owned, at least it was a few years ago.
The biggest blight in the city is those towers up there.
They're huge.
Yeah, they're huge and they're right at the, you know, top of Mount Beacon, right at the end of Main Street. And if we can lose some of those towers, it would be a benefit to the city and hide them in the cemetery somewhere.
Oh, no, I, I agree. That's what I see, that's kind of my marker when I'm, I'm getting close.
All right. And then the final question, and this was referred to by, in Bill Johnson's, are there any additional towers or site that are planned within the Beacon area that we should know about that, that would provide further coverage? And is there something in the works that we would, that would inform our decisions about this tower?
So as of now, no. This is our last planned tower. Beacon wasn't important, the Mount Beacon Tower was an important tower in the sense that it covered a lot. In fact, I've been here for the last five years. We've done small cells, we've done other, other things. We have, we've probably four or five sites that make up Mount Beacon. This is the last of them. And so what we want to do is, if, you know, it gets approved and built, we then will, you know, examine, make sure that we are fully covering Mount Beacon and decide if there are any other areas that are in need of service.
Yeah, the, the train going down to the city. Is there anything you know about that?
The train station?
No, 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 just the whole ride.
Oh, well, that's.
I can never get coverage.
Because we have a site at the train station at Red Flynn now.
What's that?
We have a site at Red Flynn, at the train station at least, but yeah, I know, the train's bad.
Is that installed?
What's that?
Is that installed?
I'll double check.
Because I still can't get my, you know, e-tickets to work.
I'll make a note and find out if it's installed because there's.
Yeah, if you could talk to someone, I would appreciate it.
After COVID, we're still so backed up because of just sourcing materials.
So as of now, there are no other gap areas that you're aware of that need to be filled?
No plans for that right now.
Okay. Do we know of any gap areas or?
I'll ask the engineer.
Mr. Russo?
There's probably always a gap area, but it's impossible to keep up.
Any, any other items you want to highlight for us and the applicant?
The other, the only other thing I was questioning was the color of the pole. You have a galvanized.
You had to bring that up.
We didn't have the color that we came up with.
No, it's in the letter. But I know the RF engineer may, Mr. Johnson may be willing to provide some information as he's seen a number of these poles aged over time. Is he still there?
Yes, I am, I am still here. Thank you. So William Johnson again. The experience that I had was, there was a site that was in the town of Pittsford, New York, was a fairly tall tower, I think it was 180 or 190 feet. And there was some discussion about what color should that tower be made. And I really didn't have the artistic or architectural background to comment at the time. But folks on their planning and architectural review board did have some backgrounds, so they set to work to try to address that issue. They painted the tower in three sectors, three 120-degree sectors, depending upon which way one would be viewing the tower. And they dabbed it with some clouds to try to make it a bit camouflaged, sort of like you'd see military uniforms, which, you know, until you actually see somebody in the field, you don't realize those camouflage uniforms really do a great job to try to protect our servicemen and women. So the same idea was, was applied to this tower. And once it went in, the lighting was so variable in the course of the day and the type of background was so variable that it really did not do what the town had intended. So eventually that tower was replaced, it had to be replaced to be a stronger structure. And when it was replaced, it went up as a galvanized pole. And galvanized poles, as you know, are shiny at the very beginning, but within a few months, just normal oxidation will cause the shininess to revert to a gray matte finish. And frankly, that seems to be the best approach from anything I've ever seen in terms of trying to get it to blend in. It doesn't reflect the sunlight because of the gray oxidation that forms. And as best as we can, it becomes something that people just don't look at anymore. Trying to do a stealth site at 120 feet would be very difficult because you're clearly going to be, you know, 60 or 70 feet over the top of the tree line. And anything that you try to put there to make it look like it's a tree, for example, is going to stand out like a sore thumb. And folks have tried that and it really does not play well. So although my background and education is in radio frequency engineering, electrical engineering, having been around the loop a few times with this, that's my anecdotal experience.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. It saves us from going down that path. Yeah, no, my sense is that, you know, you try to paint it light, on a dark day it's visible. If you're trying to paint it dark, on a light day it's visible. My sense is that as long as it's something that doesn't reflect light, cause a glare, cause it to stand out for that reason and then otherwise a distraction, matte tends to do that. And the, the grayness, the lightness of the galvanized tends to, again, in my view, just kind of go away and blend in after time. So my sense is keep it galvanized, don't try to paint it. If you do, it becomes a maintenance issue then also. So any thoughts around the board on that?
I would agree.
Don't say schoolhouse yellow. A school visit, school best yellow the last time? Do you agree? What do you say, Donna?
I think chartreuse would be fine.
Chartreuse? Any thoughts?
I agree with the galvanized.
Yeah, I agree. I thought that for the lower pole that we did near the parking lot of Cross Street, I thought that was an appropriate color. In fact, we should memorialize that in some way, I think. So if anybody else in the future, we could reference that as a suggestion for lower poles.
Yeah, it, it's pretty much in the same vein. It's a kind of a grayish.
Well, these are seen from, yeah, but it's a paint and it has a blue tint. And if you see something from a distance, that's, the galvanized, I think, works better. When you're right up against something on a city street, you see that, it's, it seems, you know, pink may work better.
You know, let's just say this, you're not, in the normal course, you're not going to be seeing anything but the very top part of this tower.
Yeah, I agree. And from quite a distance.
When I was going there, I took your maps and dropped a GPS pin as close as I could get it on the contour line to where that site was. And then while I'm going through the woods, kind of making a perimeter, I couldn't even see the hilltop where the site was until I was right on it, is the bottom line. Now admittedly, there's more trees up right now and that's obviously a very anecdotal approach, but.
That's some commitment, though.
It's one of the finer part of board assignments I've got to.
I mean, even from the visuals that they're showing, the one on Mattewan Road is, you're up on prison property at that point. So I don't think there's going to be too many people looking from that vantage point. If you are, you're going to be questioned pretty quick, so.
Yeah. Were there other locations along that corridor that were, I didn't, and that was the thing is I didn't know whether the survey checked every cross street or those were selected as sample locations to, so I mean.
These were sample locations that they had presented to the board before the board agreed with them.
Right, so like, you know, if you were to go.
Are there any surprise locations is what you're getting at?
No, no, I'm just saying that there may be other locations on the Kemperine driveway and that Mattewan Road location. If you get to the similar elevation in that corridor, you may see it from there, too.
No, they, they did take an additional, number 24 was taken down Mattewan, number 26 was taken down below, the one on Mattewan that's visible. And then you have the one on Kemperine that's visible. So there were a few others in that area that were done that they couldn't see anything.
I like how you say Mattewan. Am I saying it wrong?
Am I saying it wrong? For 30 years, we've been saying Mattewan.
Could you see it from like, you know, DeSoto Avenue, from that housing, you know, from that, from that neighborhood? Could you see it from the outside terrace and Industrial Arts Brewing Company? Could you see it from a residence on Prospect Street that's not on the prison property? So I, you know, I don't know, I can't tell you chapter, verse off the top of my head where the elevation matches, but there may be, all I'm saying is there may be other places along that east-west corridor that you could also see it, you know?
So, so what they do is when they, the view shed map that's provided, it was, and it's provided in advance, but it's also included in the final product, they look at that and it's, it's a very good program that looks at topography as well as vegetation. And if you look at it, the one and two mile radiuses, radii, the areas of visibility that's predicted is extremely small. So what they then do though is they go out and say, well, we want to confirm whether or not this is accurate. So when they're driving out there, they have their mapping. And if they find other locations like these others that John mentioned, they will snap pictures. If they find something that says, hey, wait, this shouldn't be here, but it's there, they'll take a picture. But they're not going to look at, you know, every 100 feet, stop, click, stop, click. You know, so they, they do their best to locate, you know, the most visible locations as representative samples.
Yeah. I know, you may be thinking like 511 Fish Gill Avenue, Glenn, if somebody's sitting out on the deck there or something.
Yeah, right now I'm looking at the map of the, of the view shed and I can see where the white areas are, which would be, you know, visible. And then they're surrounded by, you know, yellow, which is not visible due to vegetation, which, so when you don't have leaf out, it may become, so right now there's just this kind of, because I think that's Kemperine right there. So there's a little band where it's definitely visible if you, in these areas, it's just due to vegetation. So I don't know if you'll, it'll pop up during the winter or not.
Yeah, I think that at the end of the day, you can't guarantee that it's not, it's going to disappear completely, right?
There's, there's no way they can do this without having it be at least somewhat.
No, and that's the whole point of the technology is it's, 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 all the transmitters have to be above, they have to be high.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you're fighting it's to competing things.
If you.
You need it to be high, but you don't want to see it.
Exactly. So if you put it below the tree line.
Watch your fucking work.
People say, hey, leaves are great, they block, we hate leaves because leaves block the signal. And people don't think that, but if you get a good foliage, your signal could be, ask any RF engineers, your signal could be shot. We don't like leaves, no, for that purpose.
The flip side of the coin is the leaves cover up 80% of the tower.
True. But that's why it's a compromise and that's why we feel that the visual here is pretty good. I mean, that's our opinion. You know, will people be able to see it at some point? Absolutely. It's always going to be the case. We try to find sites.
Mr. Gunn, would I be able to jump in at a, at a point here? I'm sorry, Scott, didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. But I just want to say that our job is to try to find a location that works from a technical RF perspective, but minimizes the visual as best it can. And it's a little bit of a compromise.
Yep. Yeah, please go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, William Johnson again. And the conversation, I think, would actually be helped, at the end of the new RF justification materials that Mr. Hennessy provided, he did include three screenshots from their drone looking from 126 feet, 116 feet, and then 96 feet. And even though it, it's not the visual resource that you're looking at in the, in the original application materials, it's the opposite. It's looking from the top of the tower back toward the places where some of these shots were taken. But if you look at those last two pages of the RF justification materials, you'll get a very graphic illustration of how the foliage will start to cover up the coverage area. And that was very helpful to me as Mr. Hennessy provided that to show it definitely correlates with the RF propagation plots. So I hope that would help you in your assessment.
Yep, appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions around the board for the applicant or consultants before we discuss a potential motion to schedule a public hearing for next month? So I'll accept a motion then to schedule a public hearing for next month's planning board meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by David.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our regular meeting agenda. Next up, under Architectural Review, we have a, an application for a certificate of appropriateness at 544 Main Street, something having to do with windows. We only allow door samples in the, in the courtroom? You made, what do you got going on?
Great tower, you can see through it.
A fascinating building. Great to see you. Thanks for coming out for one agenda item. It was a easy, this was a tough one, right? Microphone. Thank you.
All right. 544 Main Street. It's an existing building and the owner is proposing to change out some windows that are rotting. And, you know, so basically I just want you to take a look at the window that they're proposing. And they're also proposing to change the color to just like a matte black.
So, so this is the style, obviously, and then with the integral lights in this pattern?
They aren't, they're, no, that's just part of the sample. There's no grill in those windows. They're, they're just clean, one over one double hung.
Like what you've drawn?
Yeah.
Like, why'd you bring this in?
Yeah, that's what they gave.
Nothing like what you're proposing. It's white and it's got style. Get it out of here.
Yeah, I'll drag it out.
You thought you could, you could wow us with a fancy window? So the colors listed, it's just the window. They're replacing the windows?
Yeah, just, just the window and the color.
Benjamin, where it's C90?
Yeah.
Yeah, just the window.
And it's very similar to the windows that, that are, you know, there now, but they just want to get something that's not wood that's going to rot out like these guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's a little more energy efficient, too, probably.
Yeah.
I don't know. I hate to be a pain in the butt.
Is six years or so the normal life of a window?
That, that building's been around for a long time.
RA did this when he was 14.
Well, I came six or seven years ago and it was just built after I came. That was my impression, but maybe not.
This is the Green River, the hair salon.
Yeah, this, oh my gosh, yeah, this has been there a lot longer.
344?
Right next to the parking lot for a plank.
Oh, 544, I'm sorry, I got confused.
This is one of the first things built on Main Street post, you know, the kind of sour era.
Okay, I was confused, I had the wrong number.
Actually, I just had a quick question for you, not to, not to belabor this, but would, would you think that, John, have you looked at this? Would you think that a two over two would be more appropriate here or am I just being too particular?
It would be, but you know, the one over one was approved, so.
Yeah, okay, okay. So it's just the windows, okay. Safe drive.
True divided light.
True, would you do true divided light, two over two?
No.
Would you do two, two over two or?
I mean, I could ask the owner, but, but I think she wanted to keep it.
She wants to keep, yeah, I mean, there's, there's something to be said for just keeping clear panes as well. And you had, you had the one over one approved, so I'll, I'll cease my line of inquiry. I'm, short of that, I'm fine with this. Anyone else, questions?
I'd like to make one statement. Congratulations on your new relationship status.
Thank you.
This has no place at the planning board. Congratulations.
Do you have champagne back there?
And, and I had one question. I just wanted to make it clear that the planning board does not require dark or dark gray or black colors.
No, no.
It was a standard set by RA that you just can't escape from. Any other questions? Motion to approve.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Karen, second by Randall. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take your, take your window and get out of here. And then the only other item we have on the agenda, and I don't know if we can, we don't have anyone else here for this, is, oh, the city council requests to review local law. We just did it.
Unless anyone had any, unless anyone had any actual issues with what we went over in the training session, do we want to, do we need to send a formal recommendation and say we're good?
No, we already, for, for what we needed to send formal recommendation on, the first one, we got that captured and we're all set there. The other ones, they're still in progress. Motion to adjourn at 8:17.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by, who was that? Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.